So you all set?
I think so.
I know we're waiting for one. Yeah, I think we should go ahead and get started since how it's nine oh two. So we'll call to order this meeting of March nineteenth of LAFCO. And if we could all join for the flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And if we could do a roll call, please.
Yes, absolutely. Commissioner Bushnell.
Good morning.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Absent.
Commissioner Nicolini.
Here.
Commissioner Benzinelli.
Here.
Commissioner Weinreb.
Here.
And we have Chair Madron.
Present. Thank you, Crystal. Sorry.
Sorry, we have our alternates, too.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Alternate Wilson.
Absent.
Alternate Commissioner Garns.
Present.
Was that a present?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Kelly has just arrived as well.
Thank you. And then do we have alternate Commissioner Couch?
Absent.
Thank you. And alternate Commissioner Johnson.
Absent.
Wonderful, thank you. Roll call complete.
Thank you very much, Crystal. And so now we have public comment. Any person may address the commission concerning a non-agenda item during this time. However, the commission cannot discuss or take action on a matter not listed on the agenda. And if there are any folks that want to make public comment, please identify yourself or come forward, and you'll have three minutes. Anybody here in the audience today? Nope, apparently not. And anybody on Zoom with public comment? Nobody in the Zoom.
I am seeing that alternate Commissioner Couch is in Zoom, and so I'm going to bring him over.
Great.
And he is with us.
Okay, so he's now in the Zoom, but no hand up. Okay, thank you very much. And so now we have item five, which is the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by the commission under one motion. With concurrence of the chair, a commissioner may request that an item be removed for discussion and considered separately. We only have one item on consent, but is there any commissioners wishing to remove that item from consent? It's just our minutes. Okay, do we have any discussion on the item? Seeing no discussion, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, motion to approve by Commissioner Bushnell and motion to second by Commissioner Matthews. Can we do, do we need a roll call, or can we just ask for?
We can do a voice vote.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, so moving right along to item number six. We have our public hearing items. And again, any member of the public may address the commission on these scheduled items. We're going to just go ahead and keep with the schedule that we have on our agenda. And again, if any member of the public wish to speak, they'll be given the opportunity and given three minutes. Our first item is item six A, the municipal service review and sphere of influence update for Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. And I imagine that our staff will make a presentation to start us out.
Yes, and I'm going to pass this to Crystal to provide the full status report. But I did want to note that yesterday afternoon, we did submit to commissioners and post on our website a revision to the retail contract section that documents updated retail water rates as of July 2024 for Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District and documents the two service areas in more detail related to Fairhaven and non-Fairhaven. So that was distributed after the packet was released. And as with that, I will pass it to Crystal.
Hello, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So I do have some slides. See if I can get them pulled up here effectively. Okay. So this is just our public hearing again for the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. This MSR was presented to you at the last meeting as a preview to just let you know where we were at in the process. Work. There we go. So the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District covers a wide area, including the communities of Fieldbrook, McKinleyville, Arcata, Blue Lake, Eureka, and further on down south. We have zoomed in here a little bit. A portion of the district does also cover Ruth Lake. That's the source of their water, the main source. And they also partner with the Ruth Lake Community Services District to manage areas around the lake for recreation. So just zooming in a little bit so that you can better see the district boundary. We do have another map in the document that shows the disadvantaged communities in the area. And that one is zoomed out a little bit more, so you can see up to Trinidad, just shows a little bit broader area. But to the north, it does end kind of at the Patrick Creek area, but it covers McKinleyville and Fieldbrook. And then to the south, goes down 101 towards the Loquita CSD, but doesn't quite get all the way down there. So it does encompass the city of Eureka and other communities further south. So our process, as I mentioned at the last meeting, you received the full agency profile. Since then, it has been thoroughly reviewed by the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District staff, including John and the new general manager, Michiko. They've been super helpful, and we've really appreciated all their comments. The board of directors also had a chance to look at this and provide comments. Colette was able to meet with staff on February 19th to discuss the Fairhaven area and services and how those rates were set. And then we also met with them again on the 21st to walk through the entire document and all of the changes that they had. We were able to take a lot of good notes. So based on all of that information, we have revised the document. Major changes were provided to you in track changes, and we are presenting it to you again. And as Colette mentioned, we did have one last minute revision that we just really wanted to make sure that we thoroughly addressed the comments about the Fairhaven area and those rates, so those were sent out yesterday afternoon. This is just a quick overview of some of the revisions. We wanted to put in the additional information about the Rona Ville Rancheria. That has been added to the tribal land section. Clarification on potential tsunami impacts. Originally, we had indicated that there may be some impacts to the wells near Essex. But after further review and discussion with staff, it looks like tsunami impacts actually wouldn't go that far upriver. If they do, it would probably be minimal. So we added that in. All of the telemetry data and charts were updated to show the complete data set for 2024. We worked with staff to get that additional data. Also, some clarification on the pumping capacity of the Essex facilities. Again, the retail rates for Fairhaven. Some additional discussion about potential future demand. Water resources planning, which is very important to the district. They want to take more of a regional support and see how we can make sure that everyone has access to safe potable water that is reliable. And also clarify the accounting practices for the budgets and audits. If I remember correctly, budgets are based on a cash basis, and then the audits are done on an accrual basis. And so that's why the numbers are different. So we just wanted to provide that clarification for everyone. And this is just an example of the charts that were updated. The original charts only went to September 2024. That was the data that was available online. So we revised those charts to show the full year and also made sure that all the data had the correct units on it. And we added an additional chart for clarification. I think that is it. Yes. Okay. So I will stop there, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Great, so do commissioners have any questions at this point? And then I'm going to open the public hearing after that and invite testimony and then bring it back to the board ultimately for any discussion or decision. So yes, Commissioner Weinreb.
I was a little disappointed to see that some important.
Turn your mic on. The bass, there you go.
There we go, still new here. I was disappointed to see that some important points had been omitted or downplayed from the discussion on pages thirty and thirty-one about the possible northward expansion of Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District into Trinidad and West Haven. The question of joining Humboldt Bay has been extensively discussed in both agencies and firmly rebutted. And this is because of two main reasons. The first is cost. This certainly should have been discussed in more detail by LAFCO staff, or if that was there, I could not see it readily. Bringing water in north of the existing boundaries of the SOI would require wheeling from the McKinleyville CSD, which would add to the cost for ratepayers, for customers in whatever community this was added onto. In addition, those agencies, such as the West Haven CSD or the city of Trinidad, would have to pay for the cost of building the pipelines, which would add considerably to the water bills that customers are already paying in these communities. The second is the growth-inducing impacts that such expansion of services would bring. I believe that one of the fundamental mandates of LAFCO's all over the state is to prevent urban sprawl and to keep rural areas rural. Obviously, the Trinidad Rancheria has the absolute right to contract with Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. But it should be noted that, I believe it's state regulations concerning fire suppression require a minimum of six-inch pipes, and that's been noted in the document. The six-inch pipes is much more than the three-inch or four-inch pipes commonly used for new hookups, and it would make it much easier and more attractive for developers to move in. I'm also wondering how the existing SOI, which staff agrees should be unchanged and which is coterminous with the HB MWD's borders, could somehow include these two communities that are outside the borders of this district up to ten to fifteen miles away? Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from other commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Kelly.
I had a question about the telemetry data. First of all, thank you for the very complete report. Were there any other, were there any concerns that kind of surfaced with the new telemetry data that was just released?
We do have, we do have district. Sorry, we do have district staff in attendance, too, if anything is directed towards them regarding any data.
Okay, do you want me to hold that question, then?
Yeah, potentially, or maybe they can respond when they come up to the diet.
Okay, that sounds great.
Thank you, great question.
I have one other question, if that's okay, then. I was wondering, I noticed that Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District offered to transfer ownership of the domestic water infrastructure to Peninsula CSD back in 2017. But at least from what I could tell, that hasn't been followed up on. So I was wondering what was causing the delay there? And if that could be a risk for, I guess, service continuity? Or maybe accountability and just what's going on there? Thank you.
Great question, and I think I can speak a little bit to that. We will be doing the Peninsula CSD municipal service review next. And we'll be reviewing, you know, their status since formation and the transition of services and next steps for, you know, next steps in timeline, I think. For, there's a lot that goes into it, it's setting new rates. And then, you know, there, I think the district will also be able to speak to, you know, likely a new master meter will need to be set. And there's just, there's a lot of steps that will need to take place before the official transfer of services.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, and council plots. So should I have already opened the public hearing at this point? Or is it once the commissioners have asked questions? Can you clarify for me?
Yeah, once we invite public testimony, the public hearing needs to be open.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay, great.
Commissioner Benzinelli.
Back to commissioners, yes, Commissioner Benzinelli.
So I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is a question. Well, this can be a question or a comment. I did notice on both, I guess it's page eight of your report, the two maps that they include in incorporated cities that the city of Eureka is covering the majority of the Humboldt, Humboldt Community Services District. And so there's areas that are light gray shaded on that map. All of Humboldt Hill, Pine Hill, Myrtle Avenue, that should be white. And that occurs in both of those maps. And I, our district boundaries are available online on our website.
Good catch. I'm wondering if that's the city's sphere of influence, and so we'll make that change. Very good catch, and I'm pretty sure that's the city's sphere boundary. And so we'll change that layer and make it the incorporated city layer for the city of Eureka area. Good catch.
All right, any other commissioners, yes?
I want to express support for the comments earlier made about the concern of the extension of the main line to the north. You know, every time we get these, I sometimes force myself to reread Section 1.1 role and responsibility of LAFCO. And so I just sort of highlight some things that I feel like I just want to flag for myself and for fellow commissioners. But, you know, the regulatory tool we have is controlling extension of municipal services outside of district boundaries. And our, you know, we're supposed to encourage orderly growth and development and preserve open space and discourage urban sprawl. And I just can't help but think that without a doubt, we will have someone back in here asking to connect that main line. There will be infill along that main line. You punch a road through an area, or you punch services through an area, you know, eventually someone's going to take advantage of that and want to leverage it to do things that the communities may not want. So I just want to say I support the concern for that line going out of the district boundary.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Any other commissioners with comments? Yes.
Sorry, I have two different categories of comments. I feel like I want to, I want to discuss the Fairhaven rates.
Yeah, please.
First of all, thank you for organizing the meeting. I apologize for missing it. I wouldn't normally admit that I missed it because I overslept. But with staff challenges in my federal job, I had worked two shifts back to back, including overnight shift. And if you heard the alarm on my phone and you knew I slept through that, you'd understand that it was like, there was no waking me up. But I apologize, thank you for organizing it. I just want to give a little background, and the reason why, I mean, I don't think this is going to get resolved. Clearly, there's a disagreement between the Peninsula Community Services District and the Water District on this point. I don't expect it to be resolved here at LAFCO, but I want to make sure that the LAFCO commissioners are aware of it because I will likely be coming to each of your jurisdictions, if you're a wholesale customer of the Water District, making a pitch along these lines. So, and I wish I could draw a picture for you, but if you imagine the peninsula, the main water line used to run through Fairhaven Town proper. It was rerouted out onto the New Navy Base Road because the Coastal Commission wouldn't allow the replacement line, the Tekite replacement line that was funded by a FEMA grant. They wouldn't allow it to run through the Dune Habitat. So they required it to go outside of the Dune Habitat, which pushed it out to New Navy Base Road. And that is what necessitated, required additional infrastructure to get the water back to the town of Fairhaven. Now, when that was happening, previous district staff, so it wasn't John, were at our, at the time, fire board meeting, telling us about this issue. And our question to them was, will that affect our rates? And they said no. And we said specifically because there's a Coastal Commission hearing. We will turn out every resident on this peninsula at that Coastal Commission hearing to make sure that this issue is addressed and that they consider the impact on this small financially disadvantaged community. So the staff at the time, and again, it wasn't John, said, no, we consider those extra costs, the extra infrastructure costs to get water back to Fairhaven as a mitigation, an environmental mitigation for something that the Coastal Commission was requiring. And so that's the premise under which we operated under. So it really just comes down, and now, so now new staff at the Water District believes that, no, the community members that benefit from that infrastructure should pay for it. We're talking about sixty-three homes that are financially disadvantaged, that have a water rate that is significantly higher than any other water rate in the district, in the Water District's area of responsibility. So, so John had said to me long ago, Troy, you need to go to the other wholesale customers and say, can you absorb this cost? It would probably be pennies, I imagine, on your ratepayers, but it's a lot of money to the Fairhaven residents. And so that's, that's the full picture that I wanted to share. I think this document you added captures most of that as far as why it costs more than extra infrastructure. So I appreciate that for setting the stage, and I look forward to further conversations with each of your jurisdictions on this.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Nicolini. So do you feel that that's something that has been resolved?
No, no, oh, no.
Or has not been resolved? And so, you know, there's the question, I guess, of how, you know, do we approve the MSR with that concern still sitting out there? Or, I mean, we'll have more discussion, I assume, about. So what do we do, then, about things that seem to be unresolved at this point of the MSR's draft, I guess?
Can I say, I personally feel the MSR is fine as it is. I don't think it can resolve this issue personally. I mean, I think it has to be resolved in a different context, but I want it to be out, you know, so that it didn't just go through. I mostly wanted to highlight for this, these commissioners, like, it's flagged right in the MSR. It's the only financially disadvantaged community that the Water District serves directly, right? And that it has rates that were significantly higher than any other rates in the entire Humboldt Bay region. Significantly higher. And that, that's just, that's not, that's not very equitable.
Okay, so with these additions, you feel that the MSR is complete and adequate, but that this issue would be resolved through other discussions, negotiations?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough. Thank you for keeping us informed. Again, I'll go back to the commissioners, any other comments, concerns? Commissioner Bushnell.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, what is the base higher than? Do you know what, can you, like, example of one compared to the other?
Yeah, the part that's higher is an additional charge for infrastructure.
And how long is that, and how long will that, oh, I see it, okay.
Yeah, so it's like, if you look at the Fairhaven column. Shoot, mine printed on two pages, but it's, it's the infrastructure cost, sorry. Yeah, it's the capital replacement charge.
And how long will that infrastructure cost be? When does it be complete?
So the district provided information about their capital replacement reserve. And so as noted in here, that reserve fund has paid off prior capital expenses related to those improvements.
Okay.
And has, in the last two years, has been accumulating a positive balance, which is a good thing. So now it's about building that reserve fund specific to the Fairhaven distribution grid to start looking at future improvements that may be needed. And, you know, they'll be doing an updated rate study also in the next year for the full district, for all of their retail rates. And I think this will be something that, you know, the rate study would be expected to reassess the capital reserve needs and adjust the capital replacement charges accordingly. And so I think the district can speak to more, but that's in a nutshell, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner.
And when I come to your jurisdictions and I make this pitch, I'm going to be sharing an additional piece of information that is super pivotal to economic development on the peninsula that I promise you will give you reason to pause and consider my request. But I won't spill it now unless somebody asks.
Forewarning.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I don't know about leading up to that.
Okay, any other commissioners before I make comment? All right, I'll go ahead and jump in as chair. I always like to wait to the end, I think, just trying to facilitate the discussion. First of all, I want to thank staff for their hard work. I mean, these things are never easy. It's a rather detailed document, and I really appreciate the effort that was made to reach back out to Fairhaven in particular and have that meeting. Sorry that you had so many shifts with all the storms we've been having and everything else. But I want to thank you and Crystal and staff for doing that, you know, for reaching out and trying to be responsive to that. And I think we've had a good discussion here about that it seems adequate now in the MSR, but that things will have further discussions to try and resolve that, those high rates for such a small and disadvantaged community. I also appreciate the comments on the extension of the line to the north. And I want to be absolutely clear that I absolutely support and recognize that the Trinidad Rancheria has every right to be asking for the water. Of course, they've been drilling a lot of wells. They have always hoped that maybe they could have enough water with Trinidad's supply as well as wells on site to be able to meet their needs for their economic development, which I fully support. But at the same time, this pipeline, which would be a minimum of six inches, would provide unlimited water for that community area to tie in. And history tells us that if the water's available and the pipeline's there, then people ultimately end up tying into it. And so at the last meeting, we did have a lot of discussion by commissioners about the concerns of the growth-inducing elements of that, which are well documented online. I mean, there's so many reports, so many studies that show that that is exactly what happens. You don't have to have sewer and water both. Just water alone has been well documented to cause an increase in growth. And when I read the MSR, there is a good discussion about the projections from the Department of Finance on growth for Humboldt County as a whole. And I apologize if I personally wasn't clear in direction to staff. And I don't think we had a motion to provide detailed direction to staff. So my apologies if I wasn't clear. But I thought we had been clear about wanting to actually see some information about the growth-inducing elements of the pipeline in the West Haven and Trinidad area. Not as a county, but what would it mean in that area specific? And the projections of growth actually show a slight decline over the next ten years from the Department of Finance, which California has lost population, right? That's what the census showed us. So that seems logical and accurate. But there are several local real estate agents who actually speak against their own interest in saying that this pipeline would absolutely create the potential for doubling of the population in the West Haven and Trinidad area. Because many parcels are actually still pulling off of wells on their parcel while they have a septic system. And so if suddenly you're not pulling from the well because there's a pipeline with water, you can suddenly have more capacity for more houses. In addition, the state in the last couple of years has passed some laws that make a lot of development of second homes ministerial now. It no longer requires public hearings or special permits or any of that kind of stuff. You can literally just put them in with a building permit with ministerial if it has the right capacity for water and sewer, septic in this case, in that area. So I, too, feel like we really need to get that detail. We need, I would like very much, and if we need to make a motion for it, I would entertain that. But I really feel like we need to have a very specific discussion about what this pipeline of unlimited water supply would mean for growth inducement in the West Haven-Trentad area specifically. In addition, water rates are a huge issue, you know. We talk a lot about in this document of wanting to, you know, do things to provide the lowest possible rates. And I think the city of Trinidad recently did a water rate study last year and looked at a number of things, like continuing to use Lufenholz Creek or going to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District supply and other options. And it doesn't take a severe math genius to figure out that the water rates for Trinidad and West Haven area and the Rancheria would be higher than they are in McKinleyville, Arcata, Eureka. Because it would, it would be at least that amount, because the water would be coming through McKinleyville. And McKinleyville would charge a wheeling fee to pay for their operation and maintenance of the use of their pipes. And then you have the cost of the new construction of the pipe and the maintenance operation of that. And I forget what the outcome, Commissioner Kelly, was of your rate study, but I believe that you guys chose to stay with your existing system because it was going to be cheaper than the Humboldt Bay rates would ultimately be. Could you speak to that for us, maybe?
So I, the reason that we chose to stay with the existing system is in the near term, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District really isn't an option for us. term, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District really isn't an option for us. And, um, at one time, the council did consider doing a feasibility study for connection to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, and at that time, it was rejected. There are not, um, serious concerns about growth within the city of Trinidad, because we literally can't grow, we're one square mile, and there really is not much development, um, available to us. But to Supervisor Madron's point, there is potential in the outlying areas, and so the council heard, uh, feedback on that. I guess at this point, I would also say that the council is entertaining revisiting that decision and looking at potential for connection to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District as a backup. Um, and without, you know, I know I'm, it's kind of a long-winded response to your question, but it's a complex issue, because we're a small community that's supporting a water system, a water plant system that is, uh, so expensive that it depleted our, almost our entire water fund over the past two years. So, we are looking at different options, so it's, unfortunately, it's not a simple answer to your question. Um, I think we're still exploring, um, both options down the road.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, and yeah, it is, uh, in flux, right? There's a lot always going on.
Yes, but you're absolutely right, for now, we are staying with Lufenholz Creek and our existing water plant system, yeah.
Thank you for that. Um, and you know, within the Trinidad area, it, it's extremely unique. I mean, if you look at the, the state of California, there are not very many coastal communities that are still not overdeveloped, shall we say. Most of California's coastal towns have been way overdeveloped. I mean, you look at the town of Mendocino, they've been trucking in water for over twenty years in the summertime, because they built beyond their capacity of their local, their local systems. Trinidad and West Haven area are extremely unique, and there's this one thing, um, in the purpose of Spirits of Influence, it talks about the existence of any social and economic communities of interest.
Yeah.
And I would say that West Haven and Trinidad absolutely have that. I mean, the people that live there, I've been there fifty years, really value this little village atmosphere that we have there, which could easily change dramatically with unlimited water supply. And I think that's where those concerns have been expressed, at city council meetings, at the community service district meetings, and other places, is wanting to try and maintain that. I also understand Trinidad's desire to want to, you know, protect itself and make sure it has enough water and can maintain its, its systems and stuff. And some of the great expenses that happened the last couple of years was because the tier three operators you had, uh, ended up leaving, uh, your operation, and then you had to contract with Coleman Engineering to, at great expense, to do that. But I'm going to pass out here real quickly a report that was done for the city by Pacific Watershed Associates, um, I think it was about a year and a half or so ago. And in this, on page seven, um, there's a lot of great information in here about this particular area, uh, and I have an extra copy here, if, if that would be helpful. Um, it's, the pages are not numbered, but on page seven, there's a, a chart that looks like this, that has, uh, a bunch of data, um, it's the seventh page in, and it talks about these marine terraces. The Trinidad-West Haven area is really unique in that it, it's this uplifted, uh, this set of uplifted marine terraces. And those terraces have anywhere from a fifty to a hundred-foot-thick sand layer, sitting on top of Franciscan clay, and they're flat, they're terraces. And so, when it rains, the water really wants to infiltrate, and it's basically an underground reservoir. And I've known this as a hydrologist, and I did my master's thesis on all this about ten years ago. But what this page, on page seven with this chart shows is the Ruth Reservoir water storage at forty-two thousand acre feet, and, uh, the water storage is listed as thirteen billion, six-hundred-and-eighty-five million gallons of, of storage. And then, um, Danny Hagan's, um, a well-known fluvial geomorphologist in, in McKinleyville, goes through some calculations to try and estimate how much water is actually stored in those soils. So he makes a bunch of calculations and assumes that if twenty percent of the alluvium volume, of the soil volume, has water in the pore space, that that would equal two billion, five-hundred-and-fifty-four million gallons, which is approximately twenty percent of the storage of Ruth Lake. Um, and i- at the maximum, it could easily have almost thirty-three percent. So anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-three percent of the storage of Ruth Lake is in this terrace in just the part that feeds Lufenholz Creek. These creeks have never dried up in historical records, they certainly get low in the summertime, but they have never dried up. Because one of the issues as LAFCO, you know, we want to make sure that we have adequate water supply for communities. And, and Commissioner Kelly spoke about this, you know, the, the idea of a backup, you know, plan and things like that, uh, because during the droughts, it can get low, there's no doubt about that. But I, I present this simply to say that there is some really great data that talk about how, in this particular situation, there's actually tremendously good, reliable water storage in the area for the local communities at the level they're at, including some build-out with second units, because we certainly need more housing, there's no doubt about that. And North Trinidad, West Haven certainly have that capacity if the water, uh, was available. But even with this, this water supply, there certainly is the potential for adding more housing and all that. So I just, you know, I just, I feel like we need to do more work on this MSR, um, to look at the specific growth-inducing aspects of a six-inch pipeline for these communities in, in particular, and also a little more detail about what, if the pipeline was used as the water source rather than the Lufenholz, which is what Trinidad uses, and West Haven uses Lufenholz and Two Creeks, they use really two kind of small watersheds for their supply, uh, what it might mean to water rate changes for the community, because that's one of the things we're supposed to do, is to try and maintain the lowest rates possible, you know? That's in this document and, and a whole lot of different places, uh, under financial responsibility, to maintain the lowest possible rates for customers. Um, so those are just some of the points I wanted to make, I think others have made them as well. Um, and I, I just, I guess I would ask staff, do you, do you feel like we, we need a motion to direct staff in regards to that, or do you think you have clear direction from the discussion?
My, my initial thought is that, and I think this discussion's really great, because this is a very complex issue, and, um, as of right now, there is not a project. You know, this project, there, it is, been discussed, um, it is in kind of the, you know, there, there's a lot of assumptions that would need, that would be made regarding growth, and, you know, we would need to really understand the project to be able to evaluate in that way. And ultimately, I think it's premature to assess a, a, a future project that does not have a project description, we don't know who's going to connect how much water, where it's going to go, what the service area is ultimately going to be. So I do think it's premature, and ultimately, I think that's for the regional water services planning, that we, um, included a new section in the municipal service review, um, discussing, you know, future, um, water source and, and infrastructure planning, um, that could be really facilitated by, by the district. Um, and I think it is a regional, there needs to be regional discussions around growth, around infrastructure, and around, um, services. Um, but I think that is such a complex issue, and it would be really difficult to go into that level of detail in this municipal service review at this time. And typically, the service reviews are more high-level and document, document the current, um, conditions for the district. So it really is the, the here and now for the district, and so, we want to document that, you know, there has been inquiries from Trinidad Rancharia, there has been, um, some initial discussions with the city of Trinidad, with West Haven, that there are these concerns. We want to, you know, document that, because that is the here and now. But to really go into future growth and evaluate that, I think, is, um, premature at this time.
I appreciate that, um, Colette, you know, that, that really is the pivotal question, is timing. You know, is it, is it ripe now, or is it going to be ripe later after there's more details? And one of the things we hear a lot in planning in regards to orderly growth and development is this thing called irreversible momentum. What we have right now is the, the district has already signed agreements with the Trinidad Rancharia to pursue this. It's no longer just a concept, the Trinidad Rancharia is spending tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars ultimately, on preliminary planning, engineering, and design work, et cetera. So there's a huge investment being made already by agreement between them and the Water District. This is something I hear a lot from the community, that they're very concerned that if this thing gets way down the road and we haven't thought about these things, there's so much momentum towards doing it because of that investment, that it doesn't really give the community the opportunity to adequately discuss, you know, what they'd like their community's future to be in a timely manner. And these MSRs are only reviewed once every five years. So once we approve this, it'd be five years theoretically before we review it again. And this project could easily become ripe within that five years. I don't think it's as un, 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 uh, formed as, as you might suggest, in that, like I said, there's a lot of money being invested in this, and it's already been said that it has to be a six-inch pipeline minimum for fire flows. And, and so, it's pretty, I think, pretty straightforward to say, well, what would that available water mean for West Haven, Trinidad, North Trinidad area that could easily tie into this pipeline? You know, that's a pretty defined area and, and situation. So I guess I disagree very strongly in regards to timing, I think that now is in fact the time, because otherwise, we're not really proceeding with orderly growth and development like we're charged with here at LAFCO. We're allowing something to get way down the road with massive investment that then gets really hard to kind of pull that back, and that's why they call that irreversible momentum. Now is in fact the time to discuss it, because it is a very concrete proposal. Yeah, the, the engineering, you know, like, exactly where the pipeline's going to be laid in the ground is still to be determined, but there's a lot of momentum here for this. So that's, that's the argument, and I'd like to hear what other commissioners think about that in terms, because that is the pivotal question, timing. So I'll stop talking and go back to the commissioners.
Sheriff Madron?
Yes?
Uh, we have an alternate Commissioner Couch.
Okay, great. Uh, Commissioner Couch, would you like to join the conversation, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, I was going to say, on the, uh, pipeline extension, you know, McKinleyville said they could tie into the end of our project, but, you know, we're going to have this wheeling fee we charge them, and it's really not for use of the pipes, it's more because we have to pump the water up to elevation to serve McKinleyville. So if the pipe gets built, you know, we have to pass on those, those energy charges. Uh, on a different issue, talking about Humboldt Bay water, uh, they have a new general manager, I don't know if everybody has met the new general manager, but, uh, they have a new one starting, that's of last month. And, uh, when she came and was introduced to our board, I, I mentioned the water task force, that I would like to see it become a little bit more active for the future, so this topic about the pipeline extension, I think, should probably get discussed at the, uh, you know, the water task force. And then, my other issue was for Humboldt Municipal Water, uh, they're kind of doing a push for their surplus flow coming down the Mad River, being a habitat issue, that they're providing more habitat, so I just wanted to put that in there so that everybody realizes that there's other benefits besides just having the, the water, drinking water provided with their water management system and keeping higher flows in the Mad River, you know, they're, they're viewing that as habitat enhancement. So those were my, my issues to talk about there.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch, and yeah, I think we all agree, we want to make sure that we protect our local water supplies, and the work the district's been doing to try and argue for those in-stream flows to protect our salmon habitat, other aquatic species, is really commendable.
Yeah, Chairman Joe, and I just wanted to indicate that we should probably open the public hearing at this point, since, uh, alternate Commissioner Couch is speaking as a member of the public today.
Very good point, thank you very much. So, um, at this point, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and see if there are any other public comments, and then after that, we can bring it back to the commission. I think we're also going to have the district perhaps respond to some of these, uh, questions that might have come up. So, at this point, the public hearing is open, and are there any comments from the public out there, other than alternate Commissioner Couch? There's nobody else online, is there? And so, we'll go ahead, um, Commissioner Nicolini?
Yes, okay. Uh, Colette, is it fair to say that we would anticipate, um, you know, a, a request for out-of-district extension of services from the Water District at some point in the future, if this goes, keeps moving down the path?
Yes, um, if there was an extension to Trinidad Rancharia, it would require a out-of-agency and/or annexation, one of those.
So it just so happens that the initial work on that has been started right about as you're doing this MSR for this entity? So that's sort of a bit of an awkwardness, right, because it's being captured, but it's, I, I understand Commissioner Madron's concerns, it's like, um, yeah, it's going to, you know, memorialize, and a once every five-year document as something that...
And this could be a five-year project, just to get it to, I mean, very easily. Um, so, the, the timing for that project and to be able to define the project better, to understand, like, even the, the alignment of the water line is not known. And, you know, there's some, there's options, but it, there would need to be more engineering done, and then all the permitting, and a lot of discretionary approvals, environmental, a lot of this would be addressed through those discretionary approvals.
And LAFCO approval. So, so, and I apologize, because now I'm wishing I could, I can't remember if I read something, is all that said in this, regarding this potential project? Could it be made more clear that this is in, in no way, you know, establishing this as something that's going to happen, in fact, and outlining the gauntlet it will go through, including additional LAFCO approval, just to make sure that Madron's concerns are addressed, and that, you know, it's not somehow captured as like project as it's, that it's moving forward? It's in transition, it's, you know, I don't know, would that help at all, Commissioner Madron, to have it really clearly identified as a nascent project that will come back to LAFCO, will have lots of additional process before it's, before it's approved? This, in other words, approving this MSR is in no way approving that project, just to have it really clearly stated.
Well, I think that'd be very helpful, but I still think it's absolutely possible to be able to do the growth projections on what the pipeline would mean, regardless of not knowing where the pipe might actually be laid, um, because for instance, on page thirty-nine of sixty-nine in our staff report, it says, subsequently, in February twenty-twenty-two, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District and the Trinidad Rancharia approved a mainline extension agreement. So there are already agreements that have been signed between the two parties that are moving this project forward. There's a lot of assumptions being made that this will in fact happen already, even though there's been no LAFCO approval of such extension outside of district, et cetera. So, and I understand why that's happening. I mean, the Rancharia has every right to ask for the water, and the Water District was being responsive to them and saying, yes, we'll work with you to look at what that might look like. Um, so yes, that would be helpful, but I just, I'm personally not ready to approve this MSR without those growth projections included in the report, because I think that's absolutely feasible to do, and logically should be done, along with some projections of what it might mean for water rate changes. Um, on page forty, it talks about, and I appreciate this, that West Haven has voted, um, their board has ultimately decided they did not want, they did not want to participate in the mainline extension project. Further, and, and while I appreciate, um, Mayor Kelly's comments, Commissioner Kelly's comments, about how the city, this is the option to stay with Lufenholz for now, because that's what's available, and there may be a change in votes down the future, because as we all know, council makeup changes, boards change, but three times, the Trinidad City Council has voted at three separate meetings to not participate in this mainline extension project. So you've got these two communities who have voiced their concerns about what the growth inducement elements of this line might mean for them, and have voted not to be part of this project. And, you know, I think it's, it would be irresponsible to not consider that and consider what the growth implications would be. So, I appreciate what you said, that, yeah, it, it's helpful to know that it does not, um, you know, put this thing in concrete, that we're approving it here today by approving the MSR, but without those growth-inducing, um, elements or, or, you know, details in there and the rate study, I just simply don't feel it's adequate at this point. But that's just me, I'm one commissioner out of seven, so we'll go to Commissioner Bushnell, and then Commissioner, Commissioner Kelly, and then Bushnell, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that the Rancharia did come to the city of Trinidad to request the water for the hotel, I think you're aware of that, and we did not have enough water to provision their needs going forward when they do the, the rebuild. So that's why they came to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. And I do agree that there's a need to do some sort of analysis around this project as we go forward. And I do agree that there's a need to do some sort of analysis around this project as we go forward. I would be concerned about a decision that was premature here to do such an analysis without proper scoping and the right stakeholders in the room. And, uh, for example, I would want to go back to our council and discuss this. I think the Rancheria would need and want to be involved and some of the communities that are impacted. So, um, right now, my understanding of the project is that it would go to the Rancheria. There is no plan to extend that pipeline beyond at this point. So we'd essentially be doing an analysis of something that's hypothetical. If we, and that may be good for future planning to supervisor Madron's point, but then we need to decide, well, what are we really talking about then? Are we talking about extending the line to West Haven and Trinidad and what those impacts would be? That may be good to look at. We recently had a situation in Trinidad where we were at a, in, operating on a single water tank. Uh, we had a storm going on and then a fire broke out just outside of the city limits. And so these are the reasons, uh, that we are looking at a backup, a redundant system with Humboldt Bay potentially. So, um, I think it's a great point to do that kind of analysis. We just need to be prepared to do it, you know, do it once and not have to keep iterating ideally, so.
Excellent points, thank you. Commissioner Bushnell?
I'm just a little, so I'm also a little confused on, um, I think you anticipate growth if, if you, if you can, but is there a possibility, um, because the MSR only is once every five years, does that prevent you from, um, at some time bringing that information back for an update if there's, if the Rancheria Trinidad are, you know, have a solid, because it's a thought process right now, it's not an actual. And so that doesn't prevent them to say, hey, we're gonna move forward with this and let's do that work?
Yeah, I mean, that would all be very extensively part of the project and evaluated as, as an impact. For instance, the Cal Fire, um, waterline extension that the city extended some years ago took, uh, took a long time to go through that process and the growth inducing pa- impacts were upfront, you know, um, the, the primary issue. The, um, that extension, because it went, um, beyond city limits, uh, required a county local coastal program amendment and a city local coastal program amendment, um, envir- substantial environmental review. And ultimately, in both of those plans had conditions, um, that are now memorialized in the local coastal programs for both city and county that that waterline cannot be extended to serve other uses, um, north along, I think it's Stagecoach. And so that's the type of, you know, once a project is proposed, service to Cal Fire, um, all of that's evaluated, the land uses, the growth inducing impacts, the, you know, um, and, and alternatives to that, um, water service. So all of that, once a project is, and there's still, I don't, I don't think the project is fully, understood yet. And, but I do think early regional planning, um, and, you know, scoping to include stakeholders and esp- some sort of special study, some sort of study does need to be likely prepared for this or studies, including engineering. But as part of the municipal service review, I, I just, I don't think it can be accomplished in this at this time.
Appreciate the question and the response. Um, and in that Cal Fire situation, it's on Patrick's Point Drive, not Stagecoach. But at any rate, um, what ended up happening was they constrained it to a one-inch pipeline. Okay, so it's a really great example of how these things do work. And not only was constrained and not taking the line further up Patrick's Point Drive to a number of visitor-serving facilities, trailer parks, cabins, et cetera, but it was constrained in size to one inch. That's not the case here. It's already been determined that this particular pipeline extension would need to be a six-inch pipe minimum. And the evidence, I think, as Commissioner Nicolini and others pointed out is that whenever these kinds of things have happened and a, a pipeline like this is going right through the community of West Haven, literally along the highway probably and the Caltrans right away, it is not a big deal to be able to put in a lateral and connect to that. Furthermore, the city of Trinidad, yeah, it ends at the Rancheria, but the city is two miles north. You know, so there's a lot of evidence in the record of these kinds of things in communities where when you build it to six inches like that and there's unlimited water, inevitably it will be tied into and it will change those communities. That's the question. So again, I think the central question here is one of timing. You know, of, of, is it ripe now to delve into these things? And I absolutely agree with the comment about, well, if we're gonna do that, we need to have the right stakeholders in the room. And I appreciate your also comment, Colette, about, yeah, a special study perhaps. And so I think that's really for me, the question is, when are we gonna do those things? After a hundred to two-hundred thousand dollars has been invested by somebody towards a current agreement? Or are we gonna do it now? Have the Rancheria here, have the CSD from West Haven here, et cetera, and, and do a special study or do what we need to do to make sure that we're looking at those things? So the question is, do we do that now before we approve the MSR? Or do we do it later after more momentum has occurred? And that's, I've, I've expressed my concern and I'm gonna stop talking because I've talked a lot. I appreciate that. Commissioner Weinred?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to add on to Commissioner Kelly's remark about, uh, the city of Trinidad needing a backup. And, uh, I wanted to remind, uh, the commissioner that as of right now, to the best of my knowledge, uh, West Haven and Trinidad are working together on constructing an intertie for precisely that reason, so that if either community needed backup more than it's what it's, could supply itself, it would have its neighbor to provide the, the water for it.
That's absolutely true. Yeah, that is our first phase, which is to connect, do an emergency intertie with West Haven and we are working on that. And that would connect the two together. And in the instance that there was a fire in the future in a similar situation, hopefully we'd be able to rely on one another. But there's also a discussion at the, with the water plant, um, management and the council about whether that's gonna be enough down the road. So that, that was my point is long-term, not short-term. Long-term, you know, ten, twenty years down the road, the council is concerned, so.
Commissioner Nicolini?
I have another thing to say, but I, I feel like John started to stand up and I'm, yeah, I'm kind of curious if John had something to contribute. No, you don't? Okay. Yeah, you know, I, I remember, I, I found myself reflecting back on, I think, I think the MSR for the Peninsula Community Services District was proposed to happen earlier. And I said to Colette, wow, we're in a huge period of flux and transition, can we delay it? If this is such, if this is the biggest issue facing the water district, I mean, can we kick this down a, a year and, and do a study and include it in here about growth? I, I know you're saying it's not really the right place for it, but just hearing the concerns, it, you know, from the commissioners, is it the wrong time to finish this MSR if this is the biggest thing facing the water district and it's a potentially controversial project? That maybe we should be able to wrap up some of these studies first and then incorporate them?
I don't think that delays this municipal service review doing future special studies. And I do want to, um, allow the district to chime in here on this discussion and, uh, maybe they have ideas too about these types of concerns and, um, and possible regional collaboration and, you know, just what's down the line with regard to coordinating with all of the affected agencies and the communities.
Please.
Okay.
Welcome.
My cue, thank you. Where do I start? The, I think the most important, uh, public hearing comment I would like to make is, um, on behalf of our district, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, thanks to Colette and her staff for the content that's in this MSR. I think it's a pretty comprehensive document. I've been through a few of these associated with some other agencies. And I think that your staff really dug into the details and, and we took comments from your January meeting and, um, you actually, uh, Chairman, read, um, a couple of those that address, uh, council or, uh, Commissioner Weinred's concerns. And if you look on page twenty-seven at the top, as, um, Chairman Madron read, um, we took the issue of this waterline extension, both to the city of Trinidad and to the community of West Haven. And those councils and boards of directors chose not to participate in the project. They didn't say, you know, why, they didn't want to participate to us. And I think, um, not all of the facts about those decisions are being discussed here today. As far as, um, you know, where, what's, what's the timing for how you resolve this? I can't speak to your Lafco requirements for what you need in this document. That's, that's for you folks to decide. The project with the Rancheria is moving forward. We do have an agreement in place. They are expending money doing engineering studies. And once the project is defined, then the permitting process starts, which includes coming before Lafco. There's gonna be a SEQA process, public input. So all of that's gotta happen. And there'll be plenty of opportunity to do special studies, whatever your, your, you think is appropriate. So, um, I would offer that. And maybe moving on to other topics that were discussed. Commissioner Kelly, you asked about the telemetry. The, the, do you have a specific question? Because the telemetry is pretty consistent with our historical levels. The, the lake fills during the winter, we, we slowly draw that down during the summer. And then when the fall rains, it comes back up. So if you look at the graphs, you'll see that, that trend.
Thank you, that answers my question, thank you.
And then as far as, uh, Commissioner Nicolini, respectfully, let's agree to disagree. So, yeah. And we've, we've had numerous discussions over the years, so we can work something out.
We're still friends?
Yes, for sure.
Just for the record.
Exactly, yeah. So I don't know if there's other specific questions, um, you'd like, but, um, personally, I think the, the document's ready for approval. But it's, it's your call, it's your, your document.
Great, thank you, John.
Okay.
Michiko?
Yes.
Please.
Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. And again, I wanted to, um, thank Lafco's staff. It was a very comprehensive process. And as you could see from the, um, slide, we did have several back and forth and our Board of Directors also reviewed the, the document. And I feel like it was a lot of participation and attention to detail. I hear from you that perhaps maybe not all of your concerns were addressed. I agree with John that there will be additional opportunities to work together with Lafco as the mainline extension to the Trinidad Rancheria, Rancheria project is better defined. There will be the SEQA process, there'll be the Lafco process. There's going to be public comment, participation, et cetera. I would also suggest that we move forward with approval of the MSR document as it currently stands. I think that it's comprehensive and, um, there will be other opportunities to address the specific concerns you have regarding growth inducing impacts specific to this project. So respectfully, that would be my suggestion today. Again, I look forward to working with all of you. John probably won't be here the next time we do this. So also, you know, to ask you to bear with me as I get up to speed with some of these issues that may have been lingering out there a little longer. But of course, inviting you again to sit down so we can go through the details and, and hopefully have a, uh, understanding of what we agree to disagree on or perhaps we can, I just agree, that would be the best scenario anyways. I don't know if you have any questions, comments?
Any questions? Commissioner Benzennelli?
What would be the harm in adopting this as interim? And making a clear note that says that there are two outstanding items that need, one needs a project to be studied more firmly and, uh, and, well, that there's two, two items that need, need more understanding or, or more, an actual study. And then to come back to Lafco in a year or two years, whatever time that may be, that we feel like we need to find the information we need. So we would be adopting the MSR now as an interim MSR and then setting a date to come back with the answers that really, the questions that need to be answered by this body.
I think that commission could condition their approval to, um, require that a municipal service review be prepared as part of the project. So when an application, and we could, we could talk about this, but my thought is, um, when there is a project and it starts being evaluated and then it comes to Lafco, that there would be an updated municipal service review that would be, um, prepared as part of, um, the Lafco review process. And that would really be able to, um, take all of the studies that have been prepared by the Rancheria and supported by the district. It would be able to take the environmental review and any growth, you know, any evaluation of growth inducing and future demand and distill it into a municipal service review as well as all of the related project-specific staff, um, analyses for the Lafco action, whatever that may be, whether that is an out-of-agency service extension or whether that's annexation.
Great, was that it? Great, that's a great comment. So, uh, Commissioner Bushnell?
I'm just curious, so do we anticipate that, um, there will actually be a project there? And is it a little premature, like time, it takes time, money, staff time? And what if it leads to absolutely zero? And, and so is it, once they come forward and say, we're gonna do this project, is there a difference doing it now or doing it then when there is actually something gonna be happening?
I mean, I think it's really, I mean, I, I personally think when you're, there has been conversation or discussions about to go down this path of evaluating growth and demand for services. There's a lot of assumptions and it would require additional scoping, additional collaboration with all of the communities and, and service providers. I mean, I do think that that's part of the project, uh, uh, analysis ultimately. And at some level, at least a defined, we know what's, where the line is going and what size and what, um, who's going to be served and the conditions upon, um, how the service would be provided. Um, all, all of that matters when we're talking about growth. Otherwise, um, you know, right now, like, um, Chair Madron indicated, you know, Department of Finance and all of the projections for Humboldt County and for our, for our communities is a decline in population.
Yep.
And so it really is a project-specific, um, analysis of, and making certain assumptions. And I think everyone needs to be on the same page about what those assumptions are.
Wouldn't it be pertinent before we make a decision to get input from the, um, areas that maybe, uh, that, that project would entail, like the Rancheria? And before we give you direction, um, I, I don't know how that would work, but would hate to do all this and then nothing happens. Honestly, I would.
Yeah, no, that stakeholder involvement's critical and then, uh...
And we don't, and we don't have that here today.
I agree.
And so I just, um, yeah, I'm a little reluctant to direct our staff to do a big study without having that conversation. And, and, you know, I think that it is some, Colette, is it something that if we adopt this MSRP the way it is today and then we have that stakeholder input, that it can come back to be updated or amended?
I mean, ultimately, our next municipal service review, um, you know, we, we have our scheduled work... scheduled work planned, and so we're looking at least five years out. And I mean, with regard to, I mean, I've, I've been in, it's, it's unknown what the timing would be for the, the hotel project and for the, the Rancho Ria's needs and just how fast their engineering will go and defining a project. I think it would be prudent for the commission to condition that the, that, that project would require, would trigger a municipal service review update, so a whole new update. And that would be paid for by them. That would be paid for by the project. It's not part of our work plan schedule. It would be paid by the project proponent as part of an application submittal to LAFCO.
So at that time, if I may continue, so at that time, instead of pre-doing the work, then that would trigger the work to ha, start happening and it would bring this, it would require an update to the MSRP, is that correct?
Yes.
At their expense?
Yes.
Okay. I, yeah.
Thank you for that. And Commissioner Nicolini?
Yeah, I like Commissioner Benzennelli's proposal because one thing I found myself wondering is, you know, I want, I want the LAFCO staff to do this analysis of the regional impacts and MSR is the right vehicle to do it. So to me, it's, it's very logical. And so can we make, are we prepared to hear a motion to that effect? And then we have more discussion?
We may have to modify the resolution.
It can be, I think, in the motion. Because the, in the resolution still would be approving the municipal service review. We can modify the motion and then the approval of the sphere of influence, which is, remains coterminous, there's no change. So that would, that wouldn't change any, any aspect of the resolution. So I think it could be addressed in the motion.
Okay, well, we certainly have had a lively discussion. I appreciate the district being here. And I really appreciate the suggestions that are being made about making sure all the stakeholders are here and involved. I like the suggestion of the modification. At this point, Ryan, should I close the public hearing before we go to a motion?
Yeah, I would call one more time for any public comment and then close the public hearing.
Okay, we'll call one more time for any additional public comment?
I'm going to speak real quick. Again, thank you for your consideration. And I think what is being proposed here to move forward with adoption of the MSR and then making it project-dependent whether or not, right, the project moves forward, that at that point in time that we would evaluate the MSR. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm mumbling to myself.
Okay.
Did, did you want to make a comment, Commissioner Bushnell?
I, I, I think if I could, that, what your comment reflects is not what this commission is asking. They're asking for the pre-work to be done previous to any project coming forward. Am I correct?
I think that's the decision of this commission.
So I think what I'm proposing is that we approve this MSR, but make a conditional, a condition such that if a project for this extension is brought to LAFCO, that a full MSR is at that point redone, that, that embraces all this analysis that we're talking, but it happens at that point, not now.
And I think that without that motion in there, and Ryan, maybe correct me, that a, a project would trigger that regardless. And I don't think that motion needs to be made. And that is what, I, I, I'm just saying that is what Colette just said, that it would, that it would trigger a, a review of the MSRP, or excuse me, and, and at their cost, it would have to be updated. Am I correct or not?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion is not necessary, I don't believe.
So there's no condition required, is that what it?
I mean, the, I, I do believe that you could memorialize it.
Yeah.
And, you know, memorialize it in the motion. And so I can be very clear to the project proponents at the, at, at that time, that this is going to be required by the commission. So I would like it memorialized.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe it's with the understanding that versus conditional upon.
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Can I clarify then, just, I'm sorry, I want to be able to support this, but I want to be clear, that that doesn't trigger any staff time, money unless the proponent comes forward with a, okay.
That's a really good clarification because we have a very tight budget that Colette manages really well. So I'm going to ask, is there any final public comment on this issue in front of us? Yes, council?
I was just going to mention that in the motion, I believe there was one change to the map that should be noted in the motion as well to approve as amended.
To two maps, yes, great.
And then incorporating this information about Fairhaven.
Yes.
So I want to, I want to move to, we make a motion.
Let me close the public hearing then. And the public hearing is hereby closed. Bring it back to the commission for consideration of motions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nicolini?
I would like to move to adopt the MSR with the corrections to the map, the additional information for Fairhaven, and the need for MSR being triggered, memorialized in, in the adoption when, such that when a project is brought forward for a mainline extension, that MSR will be re-performed.
Okay, is that clear to everybody? And is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly, first by Commissioner Nicolini. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we should probably do a roll call vote here, I imagine. Crystal? Thank you.
Yes. We are voting to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash zero-one as amended by the motion. Commissioner Weinberg? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I'll get this sooner or later. Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Benzennelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Nicolini?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Yes.
And Chair Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for a really informed discussion. And thank you, District Representatives, John, our best to you on your retirement. Thank you for your decades of dedication. Mika Chico, we, we really look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, and with that, moving on, on our agenda, we have item six A, the proposed budget and work plan for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, six B, what did I say? Okay, six B, thank you. Yeah, six B, and we're going to consider adopting this proposed budget work plan. And I believe our executive officer will take us through this.
I will, thank you. So this is a public hearing to, to consider the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. The final budget will be brought forward to the commission's May meeting for consideration of adoption. Between these two hearings, the proposed budget hearing today and the final budget hearing in May, we circulate the proposed budget to all the funding agencies. So that's the county, the special districts, and the cities for, for review and for comment. So we'll bring back any comments or inquiries we receive at the final budget hearing in May. Just to provide some background, LAFCO's operating budget is principally funded by member agencies. So that's a third by the county, a third by the cities as a whole, and a third by the special districts. And all other applications are on a cost recovery basis. And so we track our time processing applications and bill the applicant. Our operating expenses are more or less organized by our services and supply accounts and our professional and special services. And we really strive to keep our, our expenses to a minimum and try to reduce increases to member, member agencies. So for the proposed budget, we have a small increase to the basic services for the day-to-day administrative functions. That's a thousand-dollar increase to support the work of your staff. A two-thousand-dollar increase for municipal service reviews and sphere of influence updates. So we can do more. And these, these updates, as you can see, are very comprehensive. And so it, it takes time and we're seeing, we have a lot on our plate for next fiscal year, which is in our work plan. And then, as I mentioned before, application processing is, is on a full cost recovery. We budget for the applications, a, I think it's fifty-five thousand each year, and that's canceled out by the fifty-five thousand in the revenue line item. So we track those separately for each application. And website services, we have an agenda item to give an update on our web mapping project, which is really exciting. So the website services line item is going to increase a bit. We budgeted eight-hundred-and-fifty last year, we're budgeting a thousand dollars this year. This allows us to pay for the ESRI license, which is the creator license that allows us to have that platform. And their rates did increase some in the last year. And so the thousand dollars would, would cover that, that cost. And then conference registration and travel expenses, there is a Calafco conference in San Diego in October, so October twenty-second through twenty-fourth. We've typically in the past have budgeted for commissioners to attend. We just haven't had much participation in conferences. They are far away. When it's in Sacramento, we'll budget for four. But in San Diego, I, we recognize that it's difficult for, for commissioners to attend. So we have budgeted for two to attend this year. Otherwise, I'm looking back at the proposed budget. I think I covered, meeting expense stipends are just going to go up a little bit. Yep, I think that covers it all. I do want to make one proposed change. I just learned our insurance is going to go up a little bit this year. We have it budgeted at three-thousand-four-hundred. And I just learned it's going, we need to increase it to three-thousand-five-hundred so we won't go over. And my recommendation is to reduce the office supplies back down to five, five hundred. I was thinking and looking ahead, we don't have any special district vacancies this year, which require a lot of mailing to all the special districts and, and additional postage requirements. So I think holding that at five hundred would be appropriate for the next fiscal year. And so that would maintain the one-hundred-ninety-six-thousand budget. And we would just make that small tweak to those two line items before sending it out to member agencies. This budget would require a small, a, a, an increase to member contributions. So last year, county, cities, and special districts as a whole, each, each three categories funded at forty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty. And so that would be increased to forty-six thousand. And thank you, here's a slide that, so that's a two-point-eight percent increase for the, on the revenue member contribution side as a whole. With that, I will open it up. Oh, and then you'll see in the staff report, there's a work plan for this next fiscal year. And we have for municipal service reviews, we are looking at, we're, we're, have a really solid draft of the City of Eureka Municipal Service Review. We're working with staff and we'll be bringing that back. I think we'll be able to have an initial draft in May and a final draft or a final review in July. We are looking at preparing Scotia Community Services District, Peninsula Community Services District. Those are going to be both two really important reviews because those are our newest CSDs, our newest community service districts. And so there's been a lot of transition and, and startup for them over the last five years. Then we're going to be looking at Heidsville and Lolita and start our first of regional fire municipal service reviews. And, and we're going to start with the East County region. And so that would include Blue Lake, Willow Creek, Neeland, Orleans. And so that's really important. There's a lot of coordination happening with our East County fire service providers. And otherwise, the rest of the work plan is ongoing. And if you have any questions about that, please let me know.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Bushnell?
I just wanted to clarify for the Calafco, you have budgeted for two member, two people, so you am being one?
I will not attend if there's two commissioners. I'd rather the commissioners attend the Calafco conference. I have attended in the past because there wasn't anyone going. And, but there's a Calafco staff workshop in April, and I always attend those. And that's more, to me, that's more important for, for me as staff to attend the staff workshop and commissioners attend the, the full conference. That's more geared to commissioners and executive officers and, and legal counsel, but.
Okay, thank you for that, of course.
Thanks for that. Well, as chair this year, I definitely want to attend. I think it's important for me to get more involved. I know Commissioner Bushnell attended twice in the last couple of years. Both the last two years and found it very helpful and useful, so.
This last year, I missed one year. So it was the first year when I was a chair. Second year I missed, then I went this last year.
Great, great. Perhaps it's important in terms of the budget process to see what commissioners might be interested in attending at this point.
Yeah, I'm really interested in attending. Could use a little institutional knowledge, so thanks.
So Commissioner Matthews and anybody else considering going? Well, that would be two. You're not going to attend this year.
I mean, I've attended. And so I, I do find, I mean, it is, I learned so much last year and the networking is so great. I would like to give other commissioners opportunities, obviously. If someone ends up dropping and there is an open spot, I would go, but I don't want to take that spot when I've already went several times.
Thank you for that. Okay, well, it looks like we fit within the budget at this point. And as much as we'd like to have you there as well, Colette, because I'm sure you could show us the ropes pretty, pretty well. At any rate, that's great. I will say thank you to you, Crystal, and all the staff for managing such a tight budget. I think you're the envy of every one of our cities, and I know certainly the county, because we're not in that kind of budget situation. So thank you for your diligence on managing such a tight budget, keeping us online. And also Commissioner Bushnell, you know, making sure to ask questions about, are these things we're talking about here going to increase our costs for staff and all that stuff? Because those are always really important considerations. So I appreciate that. Any other comments before I open it, public hearing, I believe, as well for this? Commissioners?
I just had a couple of quick questions.
Yeah, Commissioner Kelly, please.
You were speaking about the insurance that revised from thirty-four-hundred to thirty-five-hundred. I was just curious about FY twenty to twenty-one, when it was a little over six thousand. Was that something that could happen again or?
No, so what happened is that payment goes in right at July. And so I'll put the claim in and, or it's like, comes out at June. Actually, it's born like June. And so I'll put the claim in to pay it and I'll say, please post to the next fiscal year. And sometimes it got post, it got posted to the wrong fiscal year. So I'm watching that very close now and, and work, and work, have a really good relationship with the auditor's office. And we have a, a system now moving forward so we don't double up a payment in one fiscal year.
That makes total sense, thank you. And then just one other quick question was related to, gosh. Sorry, looking through my notes here. Oh, I want to talk about the surplus fund. So there was an operating surplus of forty-eight thousand and change in FY twenty-four, twenty-five. I didn't see, and I may have missed it, where that's allocated or reserved, like where that many goes.
Yeah, so great, great question. So that's the mid-year. And so that, it will not be forty-eight thousand at the year end. So I will bring back at the next meeting a, I'll, I'll be able to give us a more clear picture of what the year end would look like. And, and you're right, let me see if I can pull up, I can give you the amount. Yeah, I think that got cut off. So at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four, our ending fund balance is at one-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand. So we're doing good. It's a healthy reserve. It does fluctuate in some years. And so. And so like, for instance, in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the year end was was at a hundred and fourteen. So we're, we're, we have, I think we have a good, healthy reserve. Um, and we're able to rely on that as needed.
Okay, thank you terrific.
Any other Commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Benzennelli.
I see that we have budgeted a thousand dollars for the mapping and that's specifically for the platform. Do we have enough, I, I know that occurs later in the agenda, but have we budgeted adequately to follow up with that project?
Yeah, we ha- I mean, it's gonna be going online very soon. So like, staff has been working on it all this last fiscal year to develop the platform. And up, so we'll be able to um show that. It's like the sneak peek. We're still doing our review of all the boundaries and and doing our um quality control um before it's um posted on our website, but I think we're a month out. And so this budget would just be the on- the ongoing cost for the Esri license and fees. And um, or it's really the fee for the creator account and then for our website hosting. So that's what um those two, for, under the website expense, it covers the Esri and our, our website hosting charges. No staff time.
But staff time is included in your staff budget to work on this project?
We did not increase our staff budget last year for that project. We just tried to make do under our current. And so we, it has taken us time and um and I think now, once we have it, um, once we get it online and it's there, it's gonna be a much easier to maintain ongoing. It, it won't take the amount of time that it took us this year.
Thank you.
Okay, any final questions? Okay, we'll go back out to the public, uh, as this is a public hearing and see if there are any public comments. There's none in the room. Any on Zoom?
We have um Commissioner Couch. Um, and do we wanna open, did we open up the public hearing?
I did.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. And so, alternative Commissioner Couch, please, you're welcome.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, I was on the Calafco board, so if you guys don't know much about Calafco, it's kinda just an educational organization to help train commissioners. So it's great that some of you are going and uh it's, it's a really good thing. And then when I was on Calafco, I kinda got to interact with uh other Lafcos from other areas in Northern California. And I just wanted to say how proud and how good I think our, our local Laffco is. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment and, and yeah, ditto. Um, okay, seeing no other public comment online, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for consideration of a motion that I assume would need to include the two changes in the budget that were recommended by our Executive Officer of increasing insurance to thirty-five hundred and reducing office supplies to five hundred.
I'll make that motion.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
So motion by Commissioner Bushnell, second by Commissioner Matthews. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
We are voting to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash zero-two with changes as noted in the motion. Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Nicolini?
Aye.
Commissioner Benzennelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Weinrib?
Aye.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Uh, yes.
And Chair Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, and uh now we can move on to item number seven, business items, and there are none. So that's a quick one there. Uh, item number eight, informational and continuing items. An applicant or a member of the public may provide comment on an item at the discretion of the Chair. General direct, direction to staff for future action may be provided by the Commission. And first, we have eight A, Form seven hundred, and ethics training.
This is just a reminder of Form seven hundreds for the annual filings. And um some of you have already submitted them to me, so thank you. We'll send out an email um to each Commissioner um where, that we need a new Form seven hundred this year. The due date for that is April first. And um also, just if, if any of you are doing your ethics training to send us the certificate, so we can have that on file as well. And that's um, that's my report.
Commissioner Bushnell?
I'm just, uh, can you update who needs to do the Form seven hundred, please?
Yeah, I'll send out an email.
Okay, thank you.
For those that we've received and that are still pending.
Commissioner Benzennelli?
Can you remind me if ethics training is every one or two years?
Two years.
Right. And luckily, it's an online process now. And of course, if you go to CSAC, there's a class you can take there, so. Yes, I know, it's hard. Okay, um, thank you for that. And then eight B, status of MSR preparations.
I'll pass this one to Crystal.
Great.
Okay, so our MSR preparations, I'll, I'll keep this short. Uh, we did our Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District MSR today. Thank you again for that and the wonderful conversations that we had. Up next will be the City of Eureka MSR. As Colette mentioned, we have a really good draft of that going. Be working more with city staff, especially on their uh current sphere. We'll be looking at some changes to that. Um, after that, we'll be moving on to Scotia and Peninsula CSDs. And we hope to have those wrapped up by the end of this year before we move on to others. And I will leave it at that.
Great, thank you. And this is just a receive and file report. We don't need any motion, I believe. And so next, we will go to eight C, status of current and future proposals.
With regard to active proposals, uh, we have a new application from the Neyland Fire Protection District to annex their out-of-district Goodwill Response Area. That is um includes the Butler Valley, Maple Creek, Showers Pass areas. And so they um have submitted an application and their annexation area um reflects their sphere. And they'll be bringing in um approximately sixty-one thousand acres or five hundred and three parcels um into their boundary. Last year, they, they worked really closely with the community um in the annexation area to really understand their needs. Um, the, this is, you know, larger undeveloped ranch um parcels. And there was feeling that their special tax, um, actually, they have two. They have um, they had a special tax um and assessment, I believe. And um the two did not have a contiguous parcel exemption. Um, and so what they did is they proposed a new special tax, which would uh replace and repeal their prior um parcel taxes. And they got that approved overwhelmingly by the registered voters in November of twenty-twenty-five. And that includes a contiguous parcel exemption that would allow landowners with multiple properties that are undeveloped to apply for um a, to be considered one parcel for the special tax. And um with that approval, they can now, they're now moving forward with the annexation air- annexation, and that's new special tax would be applied to the annexation area. Um, so with that, we will be, we're proceeding. We've, staff has completed um a referral to affected and interested agencies and county departments. And then we, prior to the May um meeting, which would be um the meeting that the Commission would consider this um proposal at a public hearing, we will be um mailing twenty-one day notices to property owners. And we're gonna get that out even in advance of twenty-one days. Um, and so there'll be um to landowners and registered voters a mailed uh twenty-one day notice informing them of this proposal and of the Commission's consideration of it at the May meeting. Um, and that is our only active proposal. And then future proposals looks very similar. Um, I did attend a meeting uh with, for the CSA four area um and fire services planning in West Haven. Um, also Chair Madron attended that meeting. And so there's ongoing coordination uh regarding fire services in the Trinidad area and West Haven areas and all the way extending to Big Lagoon and even Oric. So we're, we're couching that the north, north coastal or north county um fire services planning. I also attended a meeting for the East County to just, with Blue Lake and Willow Creek and um the fire services ad hoc to discuss continued concerns about them responding to the two ninety-nine corridor out of district and without the supportive measures of funding. And then their twenty-twenty-three annual report um has been completed and adopted. That was um uh presented at the Board of Supervisors meeting. Now we're moving on to working on twenty-twenty-four annual report. And there's a lot of coordination with Petroleum Telegraph Ridge and Honeydew. There's coordination with Ferndale. There's, there's active annexations that will be becoming for, before the Commission and consolidations coming before the Commission in the next two years. So lots happening in the fire services world. Um, and then Humboldt Community Services District McKay Ranch Annexation is still, is still pending, still watching and and standing by. Um, not, has, not much has changed since the last time I um, we met. And then I, at the bottom, I've, I'm continuing to include recent inquiries and coordination. Um, I met with a couple property owners that were um can, interested in services and potential annexation. Um, and so that is documented both in the Humboldt CSD area and in the Glendale area. And then I met with um Department of Health and Human Services staff, who is um, they're conducting a drought resiliency planning effort for small, state small water systems and owners of domestic wells. So I met and and discussed um various water services water services um in the county. And then also coordination regarding district formation proceedings. Um, and continued McInlevo incorporation um just conversations as well. So always get lots of inquiries and just wanna continue to report out the type of questions we're receiving and coordination with members of the public and our sp- special districts and cities. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any Commissioner comments, questions? Yes, Commissioner Benzennelli.
Thank you for the report and all the work that you do. Um, I wanna mention on the Humboldt Community Services District McKay Ranch Annexation section um that not just the off-site water storage, but all the public infrastructure, including water sewer mains, the sewer lift stations, will all be owned and managed by the Community Services District, not just the water tank. And that our, our planning committee did meet with uh the project with the developer and his team. And um there's been a series of emails that are going back and forth regarding some agreements to agree in the future to see what we can do to move this project forward. And that's where we are.
Great, thank you for that. Any other comments, questions from Commissioners? Any public comment? Nothing in the room? Anybody online that has a comment on this item? Seeing no hands raised there. Uh, and this is another receive and file report. And so next is eight D, status of Humboldt Laffco's web mapping.
And I am going to pass this to Crystal. She's going to share screen and give you a preview.
Based on Commission direction from about a year, year and a half ago, we have been working on developing a web map that will host all of the boundary data that we keep for the cities, the CSD Municipal Water District, all the special districts and um CSAs. Originally, the idea came about wanting to show annexation history. And that is something that may be possible in the future. But to start off with, we wanted to get the boundaries up on the website so that people could play around with it, see changes that are occurring, and then also download the data. So what I'm going to show you is what we have so far. Okay, so hopefully you can see our homepage here for Humboldt Laffco GIS. Wanna try and make it as user-friendly as possible. So for data, you can explore our data, which means that you can go in and download our boundaries. We have it broken up into a few different data sets. We have everything. We have just the cities, our community service districts, fire service providers, water providers, and public health. So if you're very interested in who provides fire service, you can click on that icon. And it'll bring you to the list of the data sets that you can download. And these can be downloaded in different formats so that they can be used for a variety of different GIS software, including Open GIS. And uh I believe also Google Earth, uh, so you can upload it into there as well. So we have our sphere of influence. We have fire protection district boundaries. The fire protection district sphere of influence. So all these different data sets. When you click on one of those, do our boundaries. Give it a second. It'll open up this mapping application. You can see all the boundaries. And then it also allows you to download.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
I'm stinging out this, but I'm having technical difficulties, so hopefully you can still hear me. Keep moving forward. So we'll go back. And then if you're just interested in playing around with, you can look at our Humboldt Laffco District's map viewer. View map. A little disclaimer pops up. This is just letting people know that this is just to provide some public information and some, some basic planning. So what I, what pops up initially is all of the cities. So you'll see our different city boundaries here. You can see them. You can see them. But then we have our layer list. And we tried to break this down, not only into the different agency types, so cities, community service district, county service area, and so on. But then also, if you scroll down to the bottom, you can turn on water providers. And then slowly that will load all of the different providers that are within the county from across all different agencies. So down here, we've got our resort improvement district, we have the sanitation district, and then multiple CSDs. And then we have the same functionality for our fire protection providers, wastewater, and then recreation. But those are the basics of our web map and where we're at right now. As Colette mentioned, we are in the process of doing quality control, making sure that the, the links work right, the layers turn on and off nicely, the boundaries look good. So it will take some additional time before this goes live, but we are hoping to have it up and ready for your review in the next month or so. Um, and at this point, I will turn it over to Colette if you have any additional comments.
No, thank you for the introduction. And yeah, once we, I think even before we put it on our website, um, we can send, I believe we'll be able to send a link to the Commission. Um, and we'll be able to start reviewing as well. And at the very-
And at the very least, at the next meeting, we can provide another staff report with the link, and that will be live. And we can continue to make refinements as, as they are found. I mean, really, this, you know, it's going to take some time, I think. And it will be just improved as it's used. And so we're really excited to get it out there.
Thank you, Colette, and Crystal, and all the folks involved in this. I just have to say how quickly staff responded to previous Commission's requests to do this, so thank you. It's really neat to see things that happen so quickly. I mean, might not seem that way, but really, probably within just a year of talking about this, here it is. And like you said, it'll continue to be refined. Any additional question, yeah, Commissioner Weinrib?
Yeah, this looks like an excellent piece of work. It looks like a really useful map with lots of really good data on it. Thank you for doing this.
And Commissioner Benzennelli?
Thank you very much for the great work. This is something that I'm passionate about. When I see a map like this, I start thinking about overlays with water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, electricity infrastructure, communication. And as you put those overlays on, things become really apparent, which is where have we put the infrastructure that makes it potential that growth is going to go in a, in a certain direction? Or what are the restrictions that are stopping that from happening? And so the big discussion that we had earlier today, when we, the day that we have a robust map that all of the districts have their personal information on there, maybe it's private, so for matters of security or whatever reasons, but for Commissioners like us to look and see what are the actual impacts of the decisions that we're making based on the infrastructure that we have, mapping is just incredibly important. So thank you for your hard work on this. It's absolutely great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Seeing none, again, thank you. And this is another receive and file. So thank you for that. At this point, we're going to number nine, Executive Officers' Report.
The packet, we have the flyer for the twenty-twenty-five Calafco Staff Workshop. So this is April thirtieth to May second. Crystal and I are both going to this, and we're both presenting in several sessions, so it should be fun. I also, we also included the Calafco list of current tracked bills. And there's only one right now. I think the legislative season is just kicking off, so there will be more legislative items that Calafco tracks and reports on, and will continue to provide that in our meetings. And I think we've covered most everything, and I don't really have any other updates as of right now.
Oh, that's very concise, thank you. And finally, we have item number ten, I'm sorry, excuse me, Commissioner Nicolini, thank you.
I saw this included correspondence, I guess, about the member concerns and Calafco's future.
Yeah, that would be the next item.
Oh, sorry.
I, we, I think we'll put that into written correspondence.
Because I saw none, so I thought you were, okay, sorry.
No worries. I almost started talking about it myself, but held back.
Well, I think that's where we're at, item number ten then.
Yes, so after the agenda was posted and the packet released, we did receive a letter from Calafco and just providing an update on the transition and changes. Oh, here it is. Transition and changes. I did report on that the last meeting, that there's been some concerns expressed, some South County LAFCOs that are potentially even pulling their membership this next fiscal year. And the, the Board of Calafco is taking these concerns very seriously. They've been meeting, they have a plan to move forward. So the Executive Director of Calafco did step away, Jose Henriquez. He's the Sacramento Executive Officer, is the interim Executive Officer, and is doing a great job coordinating and overseeing kind of the day-to-day. Pamela Miller, who is the prior Executive Director of Calafco, she is being brought in to help them with strategic planning and will also be at the staff conference or the staff workshop to do a workshop session and strategy session with the executive officers and staff of all the LAFCOs that are in attendance. Jenny Tuckler, who had also stepped away a couple of years ago, she did a lot of the administrative day-to-day for Calafco. She's back in assisting through this transition and is, and is helping coordinate the staff workshop and the upcoming conference. The Board is looking at policy and bylaw updates and coordinating very closely with the member LAFCOs on those, and will continue to engage the membership at the staff workshops and the upcoming conferences. So I think people are starting to calm a little bit. Some that were really upset, they're, they're feeling heard, and there's a path forward. And it'll be kind of to be determined whether the LAFCOs that have, you know, whether they'll keep their membership in the next year or not, but that's not going to affect member dues. And Calafco has indicated that it's not going to, that, that is not going to impact others and increase dues for the, for the remaining LAFCOs and the members. So we wanted to provide that update. And if there's any concerns or questions, I can connect you or I can convey those concerns to our regional board representatives and also to Calafco staff and executive directors.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Nicolini?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I'm really excited to see Pamela Miller involved. I just feel like Calafco was run really well under her leadership in the past, and so that's a great addition to this team.
Any other Commissioner comments? Any public comments? None in the room, any online? No hands up, okay. And this again is a, just a receive and file, so to speak. And so with that, I believe we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.